Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order with a reminder that the actions taken this evening will focus on our students and their achievement. With that, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Do we have any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Moving on to public comment.
Yes, this is always an opportunity to talk to our public about our public comment section. Our school board meetings are, by Iowa code, considered open meetings. An open meeting means that the meetings are open to the public to observe and listen to the proceedings of the meeting. At the public comment section of the agenda, citizens have the opportunity to make a brief statement to the board. To make a public comment, a citizen must simply notify the board office or board president by 4:00 PM the day of the board meeting, make sure the comments will be less than three minutes, and keep the comments germane to school district business. At this time, we do not have individuals signed up for public comment.
Thank you, Dr. Patty. Moving on to student board rep under communications.
Yes, Julie's not able to be here tonight, so I will do my best to communicate the board report from our student board representative. Couple of updates. Student Senate update, student senate just finished their homecoming planning. Last week was homecoming, very successful week. The dance was this past Saturday, and Julie says they actually sold a record-high number of tickets this year to the dance with well over 600 tickets sold, which is pretty impressive. The next focus is going to be teaming up with other leadership groups for the food drive. They have a six-week goal to raise 20,000 pounds of food for those in need across the Cedar Valley. Athletics and activity update, she said that the men's golf team has qualified and competed at this year's state tournament. The team placed ninth place, which is a tremendous recognition for those athletes. And then the Cedar Falls High School annual fall play will be the production of "It's a Wonderful Life," and you can catch all the CF actors and actresses November 11th and November 12th. So we hope everybody comes out to watch that and observe that.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item E on the agenda, approval of the certified annual report.
I guess that's my turn. It's our annual review of the financial activities for the last school year. And if we can put the presentation up on the screen, there, thank you. We will, ah, it works, very good. First, let's talk a little bit about the CAR and what it is. It's an annual report that all public school districts in the state of Iowa need to file with the Iowa Department of Education, and that report's due on September 15th of each year. Included with this certified annual report is our special education supplement, which documents revenue and expenditures associated with the special education program within the district. And the school district, as well as all public school districts in Iowa, use the Iowa Department of Education's Uniform Financial Accounting Manual in determining how we expense items and how we account for revenue. In Cedar Falls, these are the different fund types that we have. Public school districts across the state of Iowa are on fund-type accounting, which is a little bit different than maybe what you would do with your own personal accounting or what a business would do. But in Iowa, we're required to do fund counting, and you can see that the different funds that we have would be the general fund, our special revenue funds, including student activity management, the support trust fund, capital project funds, including the statewide one-cent sales tax fund and physical plan and equipment levy, debt service, permanent funds, which are endowments that are given to the district where only the interest could be used. That's the Christensen Endowment in our case. Proprietary funds is basically our food service program, and the student coffee shop at the high school is associated with that. And then our fiduciary funds, which are our private purpose trusts, those are small student scholarships that don't necessarily run through the foundation, and our agency funds, and you can see those on the screen. And just a reminder, as we go through the presentation tonight, that total assets means cash revenue, excuse me, cash receivables and inventory on hand, and our fund balances are total assets minus payables and accrued expenses. So we'll start out with the general fund, and if you'll look on the far-right end of the screen or the slide, you'll see that our total assets from the general fund ended at right at $12 million, and our actual fund balance is $5.48 billion. The difference basically accounts for two things in our case. That's the difference between that is cash on hand and our expenses for the month of July and August, our payables that we would have, as well as accrued salaries and benefits that need to be paid out over the summer. Looking at total revenue and expenditures for the year, you can see we have a historical perspective over the last seven school years. For last year, we were at $51.25 million on the revenue side and $52.86 million on the expenditure side. So our expenditures did exceed our revenue on a cash basis, and we'll talk a little bit more about the difference between revenue on cash and spending authority a little bit later in the presentation, because they don't always jive or match. Taking a look at our general fund revenue in a little bit more detail, you can see where the dollars came from. Roughly 34% of our dollars came from property taxes, just under 55% from the state of Iowa, and the remainder is miscellaneous income, which is primarily federal dollars and/or local dollars that would come, such as textbook receipts, open enrollment tuition, special ed tuition, those sorts of things. A little bit deeper look at our revenue, you can see in dollars where the property tax came from on the far-right column, comparing to the previous two years, where state aid is at $22.19 million for last year. The $3.7 million number is the categorical dollars that we receive from the state of Iowa. And then they have the AEA flow-through money and our miscellaneous income at the very top. And looking at our miscellaneous income a little bit deeper, you'll notice that since from 2014 to 2016, that's decreased quite a bit. But the primary reason for that decrease is when the Cedar Falls School District took over the financial management of the River Hills program, for lack of a better way to describe it, we were the pass-through agent or the fiscal agent for the program. We initially deposited all those receipts and expenditures, went through the general fund. From advice and recommendation from the Iowa Department of Education, they asked us to move that to an agency fund, and we have done that. And so you can see for fiscal '16, we're substantially less than what we were in '14, but almost all of that directly ties to the River Hills program. All those dollars now are shown through Fund 94, and we'll talk, you'll see that here in a little bit. Talking about federal funding a little bit, while it's a small portion of the dollars that the school district receives every year, it is an important part. The big changes this year were in our PEP grant, the district is in its last year of the Carol White Physical Education Grant, and we do have some expenditures that trickled into fiscal '17, but for the most part fiscal '16 was the last full year of that. And so you can see, as we were rolling to the end of that grant, we were about $150,000 less in receipts and expenditures, but we picked up almost $97,000 in Medicaid funding, which we'll talk about a little bit later when we talk about our special education program. And you can see the other title funding that we received for the various title programs, not a whole lot of change other than the title, $1 is increased about $82,000 for last school year. So our total federal dollar increase was about $72,300. This is more of a holistic way of looking at where all the dollars come from the general fund for this last year, where you can see approximately 55% of all the receipts that we received came from the state of Iowa. Local property taxes were about 33.5%, and local income, which again includes open enrollment tuition, special education tuition, and other items, was just under 7%, and the rest is federal funds. Expenditures, this is maybe a little difficult to see, but we are required by the state of Iowa to expense by different function or program, and you can see that information on the screen. The largest percentage of that, of course, is instruction, because that's what we do. And then in that, you can see that that's, I believe, 67%. And you can see the various subcategories, whether it be guidance, health, all the way through transportation, the percentages associated with that. And then the 4.15 piece that the flow-through, those are the flow-through dollars that the district actually never sees, but we're required to account for those. And that goes to the local area education agency, which then provides those different services back to us, everything from audiovisual media to special education consulting to instructional consulting and the works. So now we'll talk a little bit more about special education, and again, as you can see on the slide, that it's a broad term that describes the education of students who have different disabilities. Every special education student has an individual education plan, and that's developed and tailored so that it's unique for that individual student's needs. And these students then are part of the foundation formula, and those students are, in our financial, we're counted as weighted, depending upon how much more additional assistance they may need. And as the slide says, all students are first considered general education students. And we receive the 1.0 funding for those students, just like we do any other child. And then in addition, those children with special needs are weighted based on their individual need in one of three categories, and you can see those categories on the screen. And so you'll see, we received the $6,453 plus that additional weighting amount varying between one of the three different categories, and then the total amount that we receive for that child, to educate that child for the year. Now, special education expenses are pretty specific. They have to basically all be tied to that student's IEP, and you can see the list of items on the screen that we can legally charge for special education expenses. The big thing would be at the bottom, let's talk about specialized supplies and/or equipment. A classic example of that in our school district is every student in the secondary has a Chromebook. So if you had a child with special needs that has issued a Chromebook, that Chromebook probably would not be counted as a special education expense. But if that device had to have special software on it to help, adaptive software for that student, or if that device was hooked to another apparatus or piece of equipment that helped that student in their educational process, that would be unique or special for that person, that student's disabilities, then that piece of equipment could be considered a special education expense. There's always a review of the need before a decision's made as whether it's considered a regular education or special education expense for children with special needs. And then you can see other allowable expenses on this screen. The one that I want to highlight for a minute is the specialized transportation. Again, if we run our regular AM and PM routes, if a student with special needs boards that bus, that would not qualify as a legitimate transportation expense. But if within the IEP, there's a need for us to have to run a special vehicle to pick that student up, whether it's a handicap disability, whether it's a behavioral disability, and that's documented in the IEP, then those expenses can be charged as a transportation expense within the special education program. So again, you have to look at the individual situation of the student to make that determination. And in our school district, we have a little bit of a unique situation where we can charge a small amount of administrative cost, and it's directly related to the River Hills consortium. For last school year, that was about $15,000. It was not a lot, but it is something that we can do. As we'll walk through the program here a little bit, these next few slides will talk about our program, and then we'll get to the end, and we'll talk about the balance of the special education program for last year. As you can see, we serve 531 students within our school district. Those were Cedar Falls kids served by Cedar Falls staff. We had another 34 students that were served with other school districts or agencies, and that can be done for a very host of reasons. They may be foster care students, they may be open enrollment out students, they may be students that are living with somebody other than their parent or guardian. And by Iowa code, that expense then comes back to the resident district where the guardian or the parent lives. Or in some cases, it may be where a situation where the program, where the student at is something that our district, for whatever reason, may not be able to provide. And so it says every student's a little bit unique, and so that's, there's no real consistent reason why a student may be placed not with our staff in our school district, but someplace else. And then the same thing ties to the students coming to us. We had 77 students from other districts that come to us, a variety of reasons that I mentioned before could be why they're here as well. So if you look at our special education enrollment over the last seven years, it was really pretty steady the last four years. We were down a little bit, tuition in students, we were down 14 from the year before. Tuition out, we were down six, but regular students that we educated, we was up three. But you can see over the last four years, it's been pretty consistent. And again, here's the 531 students that were served within our nine school buildings, and you can see the breakdown as whether, and again, the classification of levels one, two, or three is based on the weighting that the school district receives. We sort of take the, we take the person out of it, and as you're just talking about numbers here, and so how we receive our funding. And then the resident students that we have sent out, you can see what that breakdown is. The thing of note is our level three kids or our kids that tend to have more needs and higher needs than the other students, that dropped almost in half from the previous two years, so that we had less students served out of district, which is, I think, a little bit of a benefit for us overall.
And the big drop between 2011 and...
I'm sorry?
The big drop between 2011 and 2012 is because of River Hills again?
Part of that would have been River Hills before we flipped three years ago.
Okay.
So what we're boiling down to is, you can see, we served 565 students last year that were Cedar Falls resident students. But understand that when we count Cedar Falls students, we count them a year prior. So on October 1st of 2014, we counted 524, but we served 565. So what that boils down to, and I know this screen's a little hard to read, but it breaks down the revenue into different subcategories, but in short, between all the different categories that we're required to report, we had 9.43 million round numbers of revenue for the year, but our expenditures were 10.23 million. And again, just as a reminder, the third bullet, that's travel, supplies, contracted service, and equipment. That's what that stands for. And GPE, what that stands for is general program expense. That's basically the 1.0 money that every student would receive, and you count that as part of an expenditure expense. So there, in summary, is our revenue and expenditure for students with special needs for last year. And so what that means is we had a deficit of just a little over $807,000 in our special ed program for fiscal '16 in comparison to about $675,000 the year before. So we were down about $132,000. And our staffing needs, as you can see, we track that, and that's creeped up a little bit over the last few years. I'm told, and Dr. Patty may be able to answer this better than I can, but the needs of our kids are shifting, and they're becoming, so that's the reason for increasing in staff.
And I would agree with that. I think we are seeing, and you saw that with the previous slide, the number of students that might have some severe needs. We are serving more of those students within our buildings and within our classrooms across our district, so that takes additional staffing.
So now we're going to talk a little, touch a minute on a couple of different thought processes in Iowa. When we talk, we talk about spending authority, and that's a pretty unique concept. Iowa's one of only a couple of states in the nation that has the spending authority concept. And what you see on the screen is for, if you're doing your own personal books at home or you're a small business or something to that effect, you're basically looking at the top half of that. You've got cash that you have on hand, and your checking accounts and savings accounts. In our case, it's state aid, that's the amount we receive from the state, and property taxes, which is what we receive from our local property taxpayers. And then miscellaneous income that comes into us, and that's that open enrollment tuition, that's that special ed tuition, that's textbook fees and all the other things. And you can see from our perspective, cash is one-time, that's very similar to at home. State aid and property taxes could be equated to your paycheck, what you receive from your employer at work, that's a reoccurring amount. Typically, it's somewhat stable, but not necessarily always. And then miscellaneous income, sort of those one-time things that are infrequent things that would come in. So that's trying to compare how the school district works to how it might work at home. But with a school district, we also have the unspent, or spent, authority concept. And the budget authority concept is basically the total amount the district can legally spend during a fiscal year. We talk about that when we do our budget every year. We set the maximum amount of revenues and expenditures and those sorts of things. And that is a very simple concept, a previous year's unspent balance plus total revenue for the year minus your expenses. So that becomes our, what I would, and the best way to describe it would be, that would be our credit card limit. Not necessarily all the dollars to cover the credit card limit, or maybe more dollars than what you need to cover the credit card limit, so they're two different things. And then our unspent budget authority is our, basically, our remaining amount of unspent authority at the end of the school year, so taking the spending authority minus your actual expenditures.
Does that roll over?
Hopefully I trip through that correctly.
Does that roll over?
The spending authority does roll over, and that's one of the unique concepts in Iowa, because I've talked to, been fortunate enough to talk to a lot of colleagues across the nation, they don't have this concept. They have more of a use-it-or-lose-it concept, for lack of a better way to describe it.
I think one of the things to point out here is, in the state of Iowa, your spending authority is much more important than cash on hand, because if you can have cash on hand, and if you don't have the authority to spend it, you can't spend it by Iowa code. However, if you have the authority, you can always generate cash to be able to offset the revenue that you have coming into the district. So spending authority is an extremely important concept, and one that certainly drives districts across the state.
Without a doubt, unspent authority is the number-one item that every school district, public school district across the state needs to be aware of, they need to know what they have, and they need to know how to be able to accurately project what it will be. So this is looking at Cedar Falls over the last seven years, and you can see that we slipped from 8.63 to 8.61, I think it actually is just under $21,000. So our unspent authority basically held steady. And that's a very good thing for any school district to hold their unspent authority steady. One of the other things school board members will start to hear more about in the public as well is, in the past, when we've compared school district to school district, we've compared unspent authority, or the blue line, as you see it on the screen. Starting this year, you're going to start hearing the Iowa Association of School Board putting out information on undesigned and unrestricted unspent authority. Now, you might want to know, what's the difference? Well, what the difference is, we receive dollars primarily from the state of Iowa that are what we would call categorical in nature, or they're for a specific purpose. Classic examples with that would be, we receive dollars only for four-year-old preschool program. Can't spend it on anything else other than the four-year-old preschool program. We receive dollars for teacher salary supplement money, or teacher leadership compensation money, or talented and gifted program. Those would probably be the big four. And then there's also a bunch of other small ones. We receive dollars from the state for early childhood intervention, where we receive supplemental dollars to put more students in grades kindergarten through three, extra teachers, excuse me. We have to track all these categoricals. And so our net, after you subtract the categoricals, went from 7.83 to 7.93, if I can read that correctly. So that actually shrunk a little bit, which is a good thing. I do know of some school districts that will show that they have a unspent authority of X, but almost all of X is categorical money, which is, they can only spend it for these few things, and they can't spend it for everything. And that's something that IASB is going to start really focusing in on this year, because they're starting to see a trend in that. So that's just sort of a heads-up for, I didn't want to steal Sean Snyder's thunder next month, but I know that's one of the things they're going to talk about. So this also then rolls into our unspent budget authority, which is equal as important as the total dollars. And you can see that our authority remains steady at 14%, and our assigned unrestricted actually creeped up a little bit. And the arts district has set a goal at 10% undesigned and unrestricted. So we're running right where we said we wanted to be. We're in that, above that 10% range. So we've got authority on hand to deal with some fairly large adjustments if we need to, assuming we have a major increase in student enrollment or a major decrease in student enrollment. We've got some authority that we can make some, we can kind of work through that a little bit.
I'm not remembering, it's a ratio of what to what?
The ratio is basically taking, oh, you've asked me, I just drew a blank, what the calculation is. But it's expenses based on fund authority. That's how the ratio is determined.
So basically, it's the amount of potential revenue you have versus the expenditures that are coming, anticipated expenditures. So we have, and if you look at the slide, roughly about 12.89% that's undesigned, above and beyond what our guess will be, what our revenues or what our expenditures will be. So we have that much flexibility, undesigned spending authority, based on the overall budget authority that we have versus the expenditures that we anticipate.
Thank you.
That's a lot of words to say that is basically the credit card limit that we have in excess of what we know we can spend.
Right, and then you're putting that as a percentage of?
Yes.
And that's, and you want to, and while the Iowa Association of School Boards has set a 5% recommended goal, you know, our district goal is 10%. We want to have that, a little bit of that extra cushion, and we're running above that, and that's not a bad thing.
But I guess, why would our goal to be to lower that?
You start getting that, you just don't have any flexibility if you have a lot of unforeseen things happen.
Right, so is it highly more flexible?
Right.
So why would we want to have less flexibility?
You wouldn't.
Especially if you're a declining enrollment school district, where you're having to make reductions in expenditures. You just don't have that flexibility to be able to do some things if you don't have the cushion that we've got.
Right. There's kind of a balance, as Dr. Shaw said, that we want to be 10% or above, so we're running at that 12.89%, which is good. So we're running above where we would want to or expect where our minimum would be. ISAB says that they would recommend between 5% and 10%, but you know, if you're above 5%, they're comfortable. We're not sure we would ever want to go down to 5%, because...
Okay, so where I was misunderstanding, when you said we had a goal of 10%, I was understanding why we would want to go lower. But you're saying we're exceeding our goal. understanding why we would want to go lower. But you're saying, we're exceeding our goal. That's what I did not understand. Okay.
I would strongly encourage the board not to do that.
Okay. I get it.
Good question, Doug.
Yeah, very good question.
A third financial solvency ratio, again, all of these ratios and dashboard indicators you're seeing tonight have been developed by the Iowa Association of School Boards. And this is our financial solvency ratio. And this basically takes our uncommitted, unassigned and undesigned fund balance and divides it by our revenue. And so you can see, we've slipped just a little bit below 10%, and our goal is 10%. And the primary purpose, or reason for that is that we've had some nice increases in enrollment the last couple of years. We've asked for and received the authority, the additional budget authority for that, but we have not asked for additional cash to offset that additional authority, i.e. the example with the credit card limit before. We were given, as an example, a half a million dollars in credit card limit, but we didn't have the cash to cover. And that's why our solvency ratio, as you see, has slipped a little bit this last year. As you know, when we, when we established budget for this current school year, we put together a plan on how we would start to pull, bring that cash back into the school district to help stabilize the solvency ratio and slowly start to bring it back up. So if you'll recall back in March, when we set budget for this year, we talked about cash reserve levy and all of that. And that's, and that will offset some of this.
So is this also impacted for, just going back to earlier in your presentation about the, you know, we, our revenue exceeded expenditures for the general fund and also for the special education by the tune of about a couple million dollars. Is that, is that negatively impacting this ratio then?
It's the total revenue and total expenditures for the entire general fund, not just special education.
Okay. But there's a, and tying it back, but there's a deficiency there. And so we, in order, we've had to dip into our unrestricted reserve funds in order to cover that deficiency, and that's causing our financial solvency ratio to go down?
In this slide that you see here, we had to dip into our savings account and pull money out of our savings account, cash to cover.
Right.
That's what we had to do. And that's, that, this is a reflection of that. But again, we have less cash in the checkbook, so to speak, because we asked for this additional spending authority the last few years, and we haven't been asking for the cash to back that up. And so now, like I, like we talked, if you'll remember last March, we talked about a plan, how we were going to implement that. And we're started, we started that implementation this fiscal. So, and when we get to March, and we start talking about budget again for next year, we'll take these numbers that are updated, like we talked about last March, and we'll add to that and start bringing, start pulling our cash back up.
And recall too, that one of the challenges that we have as a growing district is, the funding is always one year in arrears. So we're going to be educating more students this year than we were last year, and last year than we were the previous year. And because of that, that means that we're going to be using some of our cash dollars in the bank, even though the authority is going to be there into the future. So it's really trying to have that one year of stopgap, using some of your cash balances to offset the growing enrollment, because that's going to come one year later.
You know, it's not that, that's, that's a bad number, because quite honestly, a lot of school districts would love to be at 10%. I'm not saying that it's a bad number, but for Cedar Falls, with our goal at being 10%, we've hit, we're just a skosh under that goal. And so we want to correct that, because now, just take this graph that we have on the screen here. Now, say we were saying our goal was 5%, but we've lost roughly 4% in two years. What, what starts happening is, we have to start borrowing money to meet cash flow, especially in the months of August and September. And as we all know, it costs money to borrow money. And so if we can avoid being in that situation, that not only helps us from an overall expense position, but also helps us from a bond reading position as well. So that's the general fund. And I promise that the rest of the funds will go a little quicker.
And if we back up to that, I, this is, again, one of those, those dashboards that you just want to, and right now, we know because of our growth and our enrollment, as we talked last March, we are going to have to start using some of our authority to recoup some of our cash balances, just so we make sure that our solvency ratio is in that, that threshold that we deem acceptable, and that would be above the 10%. So it's just one of those indicators we need to be attentive to. It's something that's anticipated, something that we need to deal with as we, we look at the future, which we discussed last March.
Okay. And just as a reminder, as we go through the rest of the slides, total assets is cash and receivables on hand, and then fund balance is the total assets minus any payables or accrued expenses. So the student activity fund, not a whole lot to say here. You can see that the total assets and the fund balance have moved up a little bit for this last school year. And then you can see the revenue and expenditures. It's always runs pretty close. You can see we have a history of seven years on there. It's always very, very close from year to year. Gary Coonan at the high school does a really good job of managing the overall program with, from the expenditure and revenue perspective. And, and so you can kind of see where they're at with that. Management fund, I'll just remind everybody, the management fund is what we use to pay all of our insurances out of, that are not employee benefits. So that's liability, property, auto, that sort of thing. This is, we're continuing to do a gradual drawdown that we've talked about the board over the last few years, about how we're drawing that balance down. So you can see, we drew the balance down about a half a million dollars from the previous year. One thing I'll remind the board is that probably 90% of our expenses in the management fund are paid in July and August, but we don't receive our revenue until October and April. So you have to maintain a bit of a fund balance at the end of the year to make sure you can make those premium payments, which are almost always in either July or August. There's the revenue and expenditures for the year. Again, it's fairly steady, pretty consistent the last couple of years. And again, this is all sort of a planned drawdown, but we're kind of getting to that point where I don't know how much more drawing down we should do. District Support Trust Fund, this is where we've got a couple of small items in that. You can see that's just under $16,000, and the assets in the fund balance match each other. This is the statewide one cent option sales tax. Fund balance and assets are very, very close. The one thing I would want to note is the dashed line on the bottom. The difference between the dashed line and the two lines up above is the amount of dollars that the district has sitting in reserve, as we're required to do for the two outstanding revenue bonds that we have. Now, that will change a little bit next year as we go through the refinancing process for the 20 million 2011 series bonds that will take place over the next few months. There's the revenue and expenditure summary for the statewide sales tax for the year. The vast majority of that 3.12 million is paying debt on the bonds, principal and interest on the bonds. Physical plant and equipment levy, you can see the total assets in the fund balance. Fund balance creeped up a little bit as we did not have near as many summer projects going on at the end of last year as we had the previous year. And there's our revenue and expenditures, and that's also reflective in that as well.
Doug, going, going back just a couple to the save slide, and went back another one?
That one.
Yeah. So the, the peaks in 10, 11, and 13 and 14, that's bond issuance?
Thank you for that. I was going to mention that, and I forgot. The, in 2011, the 24.15, that includes the 20.5 million dollars of revenue bonds that the district sold.
Okay.
In fiscal 13, 14, that includes basically $10 million of revenue bonds the district sold. And if you look in 11, 12, that was the year it shifted from being Blackhawk County only dollars to statewide dollars. And we all, we knew that we would take a little bit of a dip on a per pupil count, and we did. But you will see at 4.73 versus 4.76, we've basically, in seven years, have made it back up. So, and thank you for that. I was going to bring that up, and I forgot to.
Okay. And so our, so our trend line, if you will, as far as, so 3.78, 4.52, 4.65, 4.73, that's kind of our, that's our trend line?
That's your trend line, correct.
Yeah. Okay.
Correct. I would agree with that.
Good.
Thank you for bringing that up. There's our debt service levy, and you'll see, that's zero, and it should be, because we're just putting dollars in it, and we're taking dollars out. We're not levying anything in the debt service levy. That will change in fiscal 18. But for fiscal 17, it's, it's all zeros. There's, there's the revenue and expenditures. Why it zeroes out, like this year, was 2.78 in, 2.78 out. And that 2.78 coming in, all but a couple of thousand dollars of interest comes from the statewide one cent sales taxes. We have to transfer the money from that fund into this fund, and then pay it out of this fund. And that's a requirement by the Code of Iowa on how we have to do it.
And if successful, our 2.78 with refinancing will decrease?
There would have been a little bit of expenses. Oh, no, that's all the, the principal dropped. Because the one debt issue was a little bit front-loaded. So that's why it dropped.
Okay.
It's all off the schedule.
And it, but it, but if we refinance, the debt service should go down as well, right?
You'll be replacing the 20 million debt with a, something less than debt.
Right.
So you'll
Can't say, we can't say yet how much it will decrease, but
Correct.
That's the motivation behind refinancing.
We'll have more information at that on the next school board meeting.
As we heard, what, two meetings ago, the hope is that that could be over $1 million in savings, and potentially up to about 1.5 million by refinancing that debt at this time. So in, hopefully, next meeting, we will have firm numbers for the board to review and potentially approve, depending on where that outcome's at.
Permanent fund, that's where the Christensen grant has, has always been placed. The Christensen grant obviously was transferred to the foundation this last year, so that's why you see a zero at the end. Food service fund, one thing of note on this fund is, starting this school year, we're now required to report the future pension liability. And so that's why you see it dropping from 6.34 in 14, 15, to 3.50, or 350,000, excuse me, in 15, 16. And the dashed line indicates what that amount would have been if we had not had to report that.
And that's a mandate now, coming through the state and federal government. So that's just something that now districts do as they look to the future with what FICA and IPRs could be as, with our employees and where they're at, if we had to pay that out in, in one lump sum. Doug, oops, sorry. If you go back a couple of slides, I think it's important to, to show, and I know this is coming up in a future slide, that when you look at the permanent fund and see the Christensen grant, that is, you know, one of the reasons when you look at cash balances and expenditures, we, we know that this isn't a revenue generator. However, because the district paid out that Christensen grant to the foundation, that's an expense out of about 1.4 million dollars. Again, we did that for various reasons. We, we went through the board and had that discussion. But the foundation truly is the location where that, that funding source, that fund should be at. Number one, they can get a higher rate of return. Number two, that's the purpose of the foundation, is to house those funds. And we received those as a district prior to the foundation being created. So later on, you'll see that even though our revenues and expenditures might look differently based on each year, one of the reasons why is because we, we expended 1.4 million of the Christensen grant to the foundation.
I couldn't have said it better myself.
I get lucky sometimes.
And we'll go through the fiduciaries real quick. There's the private purpose fund trust, and you can see that was about $16,000 for last year. And there's the agency fund. And the, and the big piece of the agency fund is the River Hills Consortium. As I said, we're the fiscal agent for that, so the dollars flow through that fund. And you'll see that that roughly 800,000, almost all of that was River Hills fund balance. So there's the treasurer's report that Dr. Pat T. was talking about. You can see, it's broke down by all the different funds. Total revenue was 67.66 million, total expenditure was 69 million. But if you take the 1.4 off, which is what was transferred, it's, it's really close to a wash, revenue and expenditures for all the funds combined. And there's a historical perspective of how it's looked, and you can see it's pretty consistent from the previous year. And I would be remiss without thanking my team, Donnell in the office, Carrie in the office, Jill that do it, works on the special needs students, and the entire staff. They're the ones that put the report together. They're the ones that do all the legwork. And I would be very remiss without thanking them and letting, and praising them for all their hard work, because they did a really great job. We actually filed the report three days early this year, which is, I wouldn't have done it if I had to do it that way. Let's just put it that way. So, and I would entertain any questions that the board might have.
Any questions for Doug?
Doug, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you very much.
We know that it takes tremendous leadership, and you have always walked us through and taken the time to answer all of our questions. And even when we don't understand it, you're willing to go back and try to explain it a different way. So we are so grateful for the work that you put into this.
You're very welcome. Thank you for those kind words. Appreciate that.
A point that I would add as well, you know, we are fiscally strong as a district. We are in very good shape when you look at financials with how we look across the state of Iowa. But we always want to make sure that the board understands there's some trend lines that we need to pay attention to as we look to the future, because the budgeting components that we look at, not only are year to year, but they have to be over the length of, of three to five to 10 years. And Doug and his team do such a great job with that, with that forecasting and the budgeting component. So thank you for that.
Any other questions or discussion? Do I have a motion to approve this certified annual report?
I move that the Board of Directors approve the 2015, 2016 certified annual report. 2015, 2016 certified annual report, special education supplement, and submit a request to the School Budget Review Committee to seek allowable growth and supplemental aid for the negative special education balance as presented.
Thank you, Susan. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, signify by saying aye, approval?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item F, the resolution ordering the election of the question of continuing to levy the voter-approved physical plant and equipment levy.
Yes, this is a discussion that we've had now for the last several months. It's one of our, our board goals, as well as an opportunity to look to the future on how we're best educating our students. There is a resolution in the board packet. It's not only the resolution, but also the document that we discussed at the last board meeting with the plan over the next 10 years on how we would utilize the physical plant and equipment levy. Just as a reminder to, to board members, this is a continuation of the physical plant and equipment levy. Ours expires in 2018. Our hope is to bring this to our voters in December, on December 6th, in fact, of this year. That way, we can continue to plan and look to the future over the course of the next 10 years. This is a renewal. This is not an increase in property taxes. This has been in place for the last 66 years. In fact, the date when this was first approved by our community was March of 1950, which is important to, to note. The course of the physical plant and equipment levy in Cedar Falls has been really focused on technology and how to implement technology for our students. It's been preventive maintenance of our buildings to make sure that they're upgraded and upcap the right way. Transportation and fleet maintenance of all of our buses, all of our maintenance equipment and upgrades of those. And then as well as some of the repairs and additions and improvements made for our buildings and grounds across our district. This is, again, very important as we look at maintaining, improving, increasing the educational quality across our district, and certainly would entertain any, any questions of what we've discussed, not only over the course of the last several months, but any questions you might have about that resolution. questions you might have about that resolution.
Yeah, I don't think I have any questions necessarily about the resolution. I, I, you know, one, once again, thank, you know, you guys for going through the, the process of trying to prioritize and, and look as well as you could into a crystal ball of what expenses we may be required. It's just more of a, an encouragement. Can we put this into a format that's more digestible for, I mean, I know that we've seen it several times and Doug, I'm sure you dream about it. Is, as far as laying it out in a document that just kind of says, hey, this is what we're, think we're going to do, you know, here's for year one and, and kind of a summary of, of here's what the type of projects we've got planned for year one, for year two and, and you know, not, not anything very, very deep, but, but just kind of walks people through, walks people through what Pepple, what we hope to achieve with Pepple over the next 10 years. And everybody should understand that this is, as I said, a cloudy crystal ball and it will change over time, but at least we have a, a plan, a vision for, for where we want to go with Pepple. So I guess that would, that's just my comment, just so that, you know, and we can stick it up on the website and, and that's easily, more easily digestible.
Yes, this is pretty cumbersome when you look at it and just the scope and, and how it's laid out. And we did that mainly to try to show those yearly expenditures, but I think there's a way and a format that we can work to be able to create something that's going to be more consumable by our public.
Would it also be possible, and I don't want to add extra work, but would it also be possible to just sort of summarize how it's been used in the past? Maybe 10?
Yep, yep. And we're putting together several documents that kind of show just, you know, what the use is, what it has been for, what is going to be used for the future, as well as just some of those factual tidbits about physical plant and equipment levy. So I think that's important for people to understand. This has been utilized well in the past. It will continue to be planned prudently into the future.
Right. Because we've been using it for what, 62 years, right?
66 years.
66 years. Long time.
It has been.
Our community's supported that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the resolution ordering an election on the question of continuing to levy a voter approved physical plant and equipment property tax as presented.
Thank you, Jenny. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Roll call.
Okay. We need a roll call vote here.
We'll do a roll call on this one just to make sure. Mrs. Leaper?
Yes.
Mr. Kenyon?
Yes.
Mrs. Coyle?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Dr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
And Mr. Haseman?
Yes.
Thank you.
As there has been some other conversations and dialogue about another election that's going to be occurring here in the next month or so, I think November 8th, we, we are going to fully communicate out to everybody on this. We, we know that there's been a lot of dialogue on the board table. We've held some internal dialogues. We've gone out to, to talk to other groups about this, but we also know if we send out a, a large amount of information to, to people in their homes, it's probably not going to have the attention just because of the, the federal national election that's occurring. But we do have a communication plan and certainly will continue to, to work with multiple constituent groups across our, the Cedar Falls to, to help them understand what this is, why we're moving forward with this and the importance that it has for our students and their learning.
I would request that somebody make a presentation for the Northern Iowa Student Government.
Great, great idea.
Okay, good. Thank you. Moving on to the superintendent's report.
The first item that's not listed on the agenda actually is just two slides that we wanted to highlight. First and foremost, congratulations to the Cedar Falls Community School District in Hanson Elementary. They have been named a National Blue Ribbon School for 2016. We actually surprised the staff the morning of when, when that was announced. The, and you can see there's a cake and balloons and certainly just for them to be able to, to be recognized for that recognition. The second slide shows the, just a couple of different points. This now is one of three blue ribbon schools in, in Cedar Falls Community School District joining Pete and Lincoln Elementary. This year for Hanson's recognition, they were one of 279 public schools across the country that were recognized. And again, this is done at the federal government for exemplary high performing in, in students that, or schools that are focused on academic excellence. This is something that we were notified of. The Department of Education in the state of Iowa actually will nominate up to five schools. This is not districts, this is individual schools, which is a very prestigious award. And one of the things that we've talked about and, and shared, this is really an award for all of the schools, the entire district, because it's really reflective of the collaborative focus that we have across our district. So very exciting, something that doesn't happen very often, but certainly something that we wanted to highlight for the board, which is a neat honor. Couple of other things that I had down. The IASB State Convention, November 16th and 17th, and, and very excited about that coming up. Not many people might know this out in the, the public, but on October 25th and 26th, we are having seven habits training with some board members as well as some members of the city and, and some members from Cedar Falls Utilities, which I think is going to be a tremendous training and an opportunity for some, some joint work. On October 24th, our next board meeting, we have the information reports of the Iowa assessments. As previously discussed, we are also going to have the opportunity to look at the bids for the refinancing and the potential savings of the dollars associated with that. The challenge is on October 21st is when those bids come in, so it's going to be later in the day on that Friday. We'll get information out to the board via email, but again, really the first time you're going to probably see that is via email, then also at that meeting on the October 24th, just the way that the timing went and, and the bidding process went. February 7th, I will send this out as an email reminder and potentially as a doodle, but February 7th, we will need a special board meeting. That is tentatively when we look at the bond sale for the general obligation bond approved this past year. That will have to take place after 4:00 PM because we have to have a board meeting the date of the bond sale to be able to approve the lowest bidders on the bond sale for that general obligation bond. So I just wanted people to look at the calendar to be able to hopefully look forward and, see an email that will come from me so we can set that board meeting. It gets on people's calendars and then we can approve the general obligation letting that will come on that date, February 7th.
Are you thinking a seven o'clock meeting or?
You know, I, it would just soon send out a doodle to find out what would work for everybody. And typically those meetings won't take very long. It's just a matter of making sure that we've received all the bids, that the, the bond letting is finalized and, and we'll take the lowest recommended bond and responsible bidder to, to the board as a recommendation for approval. So it's going to be a fairly short meeting, but a very significant meeting as we look to the future and certainly excited about what that means and what that brings to our students and the entire Cedar Falls community.
And for those board members that haven't been involved in that before, representatives from Spear Financial will be here as well that day to make that recommendation.
The last item that I would have is certified enrollment was on October 1st. We know on, on October 15th, all of the components get finalized, some of the students and calculations get finalized. But at this time, we appear that we are going to be between 80 and 85, maybe a few more students positive of growth this year during certified enrollment. We had anticipated that we would grow by about 62 students based on our projections from RSP. So we are exceeding that by another, you know, 25 to 30 students potentially with what are now being served across Cedar Falls. Very exciting. It goes back to some of the budgeting components that Mr. Neffker shared, that again, it's always one year in arrears and, and we are serving again 85 plus more students than we were last year at this time, based on last year's funding. So that's always exciting. It's a challenge, but it's certainly something that lends into the credence of where we're moving in, in the future with our budget enrollments and our overall enrollments across Cedar Falls. That's all I had.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Patty? All right. Any questions, comments, or concerns from the board?
I just wanted to say I have heard back from all of the elementary PTAs and we have their dates, so we should be working on that. Suzie, are you going to go ahead?
By the middle of this week, we should have a document back out on Google.
Okay.
And I do know the secondary reps, the high school rep has reached out to the two junior high reps to see if they think a joint meeting might make sense. I think the general thinking is that it could be a great benefit to have all the PTAs kind of come together. You know, a lot of times junior high parents have questions as their kids are heading into the high school, so it's a great opportunity for them to sit down and just have some shared concerns so there can be some feedback back and forth. So I will keep you posted.
Thank you, Jenny. Thanks, Suzie, for putting that together. And thank you, Dr. Patty, for arranging the building visits and just what's, what we're being, going, going to be able to see. It's pretty exciting this year, so thank you. Hope you've had an opportunity to fill out the doc and sign up for time, so.
And I know we say this quite often, but it's, it's a great opportunity for board members to get out into the buildings, to see the great work that's going on by our staff. We have an amazing staff that, that what they do each and every day for students is so impressive. So that's going to be neat to continue that, those opportunities and to, to visit those teams.
Thank you. Any other things to come before the board? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.